Please rise for the invocation, invocation followed by pledge of flag.
Almighty God, you lend your strength to all those who are there for us in times of crisis, fear, and hurt. You give courage to the first responders who continue to do this important work they are called to do, looking beyond the risk for the sake of those who need their help and protection. We turn to you for peace and security as we recall, we recall the nine eleven attack. We thank you for the bravery and sacrifice of those who saved lives as the firefighters, police officers, rescue crews, or other people aboard United Third Ninety-three. Conference straighten the family and friends for those who died. Give healing and patience to the survivors of the attacks who are living in continued physical and psychological pain is with them. May those who survive feel gratitude, not guilt. Assure each person whose life changed forever of the protection and strength. Dispel the nightmares, silence the anxiety. May we learn to depend on the security you offer. We thank all first responders and volunteers who worked on the Saturday's Tunnel to Towers Foundation to honor our first responders of our area. Saturday's events, both the twentieth anniversary commemoration and of that horrific day, and our first East and Twilight Carterian Bike Races are examples of weaving our community together for a better city. As we remember the terrorism attacks of nine eleven, we pray for our peace and that terrorism be eradicated throughout the world. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Eddinger?
Here.
Mr. Millan?
Here.
Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
Dr. Ruggles?
Here.
Mrs. Volcano?
Here.
Mayor Panto?
Here. We now have approval of the agenda.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Millan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Axon in minutes of our August twenty-fifth meeting?
Moved. Second.
Any additions, corrections, or deletions? Roll call.
Mr. Millan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Axe on the minutes of our August twenty-fifth meeting?
Moved. Second.
Any additions, corrections, or deletions? Roll call.
Mr. Millan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Millan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Axon in minutes of our August twenty-fifth meeting?
Moved. Second.
Any additions, corrections, or deletions? Roll call.
Mr. Millan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Chief Carl Scowzo, City of Easton Police Department, forty-eight North Fourth Street. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to be swearing in our newest Sergeant, Phil McGuigan. Before I call Philip, I just wanted to take a moment and just mention and speak a little bit of how an officer gets to this point. The process of promotion within the Easton Police Department is not one that we take lightly as a department. It's a very extensive process. It entails a written exam and oral interview. But more importantly, the accomplishments and contributions that an officer makes to the department throughout their entire career is then considered as we make a selection. In this testing cycle for Sergeant, sixteen qualified officers went through the process for promotion. Detective Phil McGuigan actually came out on top. The reason for the heavy scrutiny is that we believe that the success of the promotion process and the individuals that we select for leadership positions are the best way to ensure that the continued professionalism of the department and the safety of every officer, citizen, and visitor that we encounter. It's a great responsibility, and it represents how highly we as a command think of Detective McGuigan and his ability to lead the officers of the department. Through the diligence of the process, we're confident the department's future will continue to flourish. I would now call Detective Phil McGuigan. Ask him to step forward, please. Detective McGuigan is being recommended to be promoted to the rank of Sergeant, where he'll be assigned to duty as a supervisor on the night shift, which is six P M. to six A M. Detective McGuigan began his employment with the City of Easton Police Department in two thousand and seven. He attended and graduated from the Allentown Police Academy. Upon graduation from the academy, Detective McGuigan was assigned to the patrol division and assigned to the four-to-twelve shift. During his time on patrol, Detective McGuigan became a member of the Commercial Vehicle Enforcement Unit, the Community Police Bike Unit, and the Crime Scene Processing Unit. During this time, Detective McGuigan became a defensive tactics instructor, carrying the responsibility of training all officers on the utilization of force and tactical control, which obviously is an essential part of departmental and citizen's safety and operational success. In two thousand and eleven, Detective McGuigan joined the Easton Police Department, Department's K-nine unit, where he was, where he remained for nine years, working with his K-nine partner, Taco. In two thousand and nineteen, Detective McGuigan retired his dog and became a detective, working for the Department's Criminal Investigation Division. Detective McGuigan has received numerous awards and recognitions throughout his career, to include three commendations, nine unit citations, and one achievement award. Detective McGuigan has dedicated over fourteen years to law enforcement, the law enforcement profession, and the City of Easton as a police officer. Therefore, I recommend him be promoted to the rank of Sergeant.
Anything else, Chief?
Nope, that's it. Thank you very much. We appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have public comment on agenda items only. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address City Council? I would also like to thank the family before you all leave. Thank you for giving Phil to us. We'll go on to consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
Under the consent agenda, we have several items. We have Bill Number Thirty-three that was introduced by Mr. O'Connell, and it would be amending certain sections within the zoning code. We also have several resolutions that will be authorizing the application to PennDOT for traffic signal approval for the circle redesign. The first one is at South Fourth and Ferry Street. The second one is at North Third and Spring Garden, Center Square and East Northampton, Center Square and North Third, Center Square and South Third, Center Square and West Northampton Street, South Third Street and Ferry Street, and Second Street and Northampton Street. We also have a, an agreement between the City of Easton and PennDOT, the Department of Transportation, for a traffic signal maintenance agreement.
Move the consent agenda? Moved and seconded, Dr. Ruggles.
What, what signal are they proposing at Second and Ferry?
It's actually the intersection itself. I don't think they're actually proposing a, a, a signal. It's, we have, these are maintenance on all the intersections of what we want to do. Making it two-way requires an additional permit.
Okay. Because it, it had traffic signal approval, and I, I looked at it, and it looked like they were going to put a signal down there, and I was wondering how that was going to work.
I can check on you for that. But I don't, I don't think there's a signal going there. It's just two-way traffic. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Millan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
And Mayor Panto?
Aye. I'll receive the Fire Department report for August two thousand and twenty-one on behalf of council, and we'll go and read the reports of committees. Vice Mayor Brown, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one item coming on this evening. That's Bill Number Thirty-five, amending the general fund budget, which is just a transfer. And I also wanted to let council know, I did go to the veggie on, on Tenth Street, I believe it was on North Tenth Street, and it was quite attended. I missed most of the crowd. I was able to harvest in fifty people that received things. And this Thursday, they are having their annual cookout, and they invited all council members, if available, to be there. I believe it starts between five and five-thirty.
And it's over at seven. I got there at seven fifteen last Thursday. It was already closed.
I got there at ten o'clock six, and they were gone. They were just packing up.
Okay. Remember that.
Get too early.
Ten o'clock six, and it starts at five?
It's going to start at five tomorrow.
Under, under Finance, I also, the budget presentation is scheduled for October first by charter. It's a Friday. I'd like to know what time City Council would like to meet.
Mayor, I won't be available that night. I'm away.
Okay.
How about five o'clock?
Mayor, it was advertised for four.
It was advertised for four?
It was advertised for four.
Is that all right with everybody?
Yeah.
It would be if I could hear.
Yeah, I just take, I get out there.
Okay.
I'll get out.
All right. Economic Development Committee, Councilmember Volcano.
Thank you, Mayor. Last night, we had a committee meeting, and one of the things that was discussed at the committee meeting, we had a presentation by the ad hoc and Mr. Hopkins on the Eastern Iron Metal, and also who the ad hoc chose to bring, be the developer for that project to bring before council, which is V M Developers. Mrs. Gretchen.
Rice.
Rice. Gave the presentation for V M and what is planned down there at the Eastern Iron Metal property, and it will be coming to council probably at the next meeting to approve what the ad hoc is suggesting, which developer they would like us to approve. And then we will go through that process as we did with the one eighty-five project down below and all the paraphernalia that you have to do to get that project moving. Also, we had a presentation from the Hind Street Garage Project. That ad hoc committee was led by Diane, I believe.
Hablin.
Hablin.
Hablin. And she, along with the developer that they are recommending, which is J B Riley. J B Riley gave the presentation, presentation last evening on the project that they wish to do. If it is approved by council again, it'll probably be brought on our agenda in two weeks. Both of them were very impressive. Those two committees worked very diligently and met several times to come to that conclusion that they brought to us. So I'm hoping that City Council, who was here last night, also were very excited about the two that they brought and will be in favor of them in two weeks when it is presented to us. One other thing I'd like to bring up is I received a note from Main Street Director Kim Commets. In reference, we're getting close again, once again, to free parking for the Christmas holiday. She asked that we put the following dates on our agenda for possibly as soon as possible. So I'm hoping to have that on as a resolution in two weeks. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine dates, from the twenty-sixth to December nineteenth is when she is suggesting. So I will see that back on the agenda for two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have. Last thing I would like to add to the two presentations, I thought they were very well.
The only thing that I would add is something, a third topic, is you've probably saw on social media and you've received a number of emails about Kenesha's putting down on North Hampton Street. Again, I would just reiterate that in talking with Stephen Erowski, it is unfortunately occurring between the landlord and the tenant. It has nothing to do with the city. The city has issued all the permits. The work is just not being done by the developer. Louis did call the developer for me personally. I, I don't know how to resolve it. The only thing is with the funding that was appropriate, or will be appropriated, if there's any discussion on the ARPA funds, some of that, there's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is budgeted for small business grants to help them through this rough time. And right now, they're having one of the roughest times because they've been out of business since, for now, three and a half, four months. And maybe a new location, if we can help them find a new location. I know Kim Commets has been working on it. The, the issue, very honestly, is it has to be a place that's certified as a commercial kitchen, and there's no place left in downtown Easton that has a commercial kitchen. So although they own their own equipment, they still need, would have to do renovations. So there's a possibility we can give them a grant or a low-interest loan, or a zero-interest loan once we set that program up. But we certainly don't want them to move out of Easton and move to some other city. We, we value both Sean and Kenesha's. I've met with both of them. I value their, their, their product. We were able to taste it. If you weren't, if you didn't have it before, we had it at the Commodore, groundbreaking. It's very good. So, so that's something that ARPA could possibly help them with. But the, the actual getting the renovations done and repairs made is between the tenant and the landlord. I see a lot of things, you know, why can't the city do something? Why isn't the mayor involved? We are involved to the extent that we will do whatever we can to get them open as soon as possible, but it's really, the repairs are up to the, and it's unfortunate, it was just an accident. I mean, the lady who lived upstairs above the shop drilled a hole in the wall, she went right through the suppression system, the fire suppression system, so it just flooded the whole place. So, but other than that, thank you, Madam Volcano.
One quick thing, but going back to the budget date, I believe October first is the same date as Dr. Hurd's inauguration?
It is.
I believe that's at four or four-thirty. I'm not sure if you're, you had mentioned that you're going to be speaking at it.
I am a speaker, yes.
That's all day, too.
There's, yeah, and there's, there's events going on afterwards for a while. But, but the four, four-thirty, I'm just bringing that up right now since we're talking about it.
That's right. She, I, I have her down at four o'clock. How's noon? We'd have to re-advertise, but that's okay. Noon? Anyone okay with noon?
I'm okay with noon.
On the first?
I'm good.
On the first, October first.
I'm not going to be there.
Oh, you're not going to be there either. So the two, you, you two won't be there, so it doesn't matter what time we do it. Anyone else? So we will still have, obviously, it's just a presentation of the budget. Let's set it for noon, and Madam Clerk, can we just re-advertise that?
Louis, could you, would you talk to Tracy about posting it on our thing to make sure, just so there's no? Because it has been advertised already.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I'll send that in tomorrow.
Thank you for getting that catch, Louis. Okay, Planning and Code Committees, Councilmember O'Connell.
I have no report, Mayor.
Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Ruggles.
I have no report.
Public Works Committee, Councilmember Eddinger.
I have no report tonight. I will, however, be introducing Bill Number Thirty-four, amending sections in Chapter four seventy-five sewer codes.
And Administration Committee, Councilmember Malone.
I have no report, Mayor.
Reporter of the City, Assistant Mr. Shear.
I have no report.
By the way, your boss, your former boss is in town.
Oh, is he?
He came in town today.
And he's hiding.
He's hiding from you.
Yeah.
He's afraid if he talks to you, you'll, you'll ask him how to do your job for the next three hours. I'm having dinner with him and his wife tomorrow night.
Oh, okay, because, yeah.
I have a question. If, if his name's still unassigned, does he maintain liability for the property?
Uh, well, that, he could be Murphy Hurst, Hurster. Along with, along with Andy, along with Andy Hurst, he has equal liability.
Andy Hurst would not be sued. He's been long gone. Reporter of the Mayor, the only thing I will add is Saturday's events were really beautiful. I think the nine eleven event was very emotional, and the bike races on Saturday night were really, people are really happy with that. I've read a number of articles on social media that, you know, they wonder why there wasn't as many people. Just so you know, that the next day in Basking Ridge, they had probably fifty people, spectators. I don't know how. We talked about it at the staff meeting on Tuesday. I don't know how to get the word out anymore. I do want to say, John, Channel sixty-nine's been the only one that's given us any kind of pre-advertising about the events. I put out two, two new press releases. Not one of them was printed. But we're going to try to do it with downtown. People were telling me they didn't know about the, the new parking, and they were, they had to get up and get their car out of the way. They had no idea. So we're going to try to get everybody's email addresses and start putting them into constant contact and send out email blasts before all these events.
I mean, if you, if you look in Palmer and Forks, both of them have lighted displays that announce.
Yeah, we, we look for that. Unfortunately, we can't find a good location. We thought for West, where was, was that? The Wells Fargo Building, yeah. Yeah, we could put it on the Wells Fargo Building. Nice big billboard.
Right on the circle.
We, we thought about Thirteenth and Northampton, but not, no, Thirteenth and Wood Avenue, where the, where the grassy area is for the West Ward, but not everybody goes there. Obviously, South Side Hill, we're looking to put a welcome to Easton.
You can't have it on my property.
Well, well, maybe we pay them back.
Eminent domain.
You know why I say that? Because the part, the house across the street has one of those lighted signs, and the neighbor across the street on Lincoln Street complained, and now he has, they have to keep it turned off.
Yeah, I know. Mr., uh.
He doesn't own the property.
Croce doesn't own it anymore.
Certo, yeah.
Certo, Croce Certo. So, but it was a nice event, both events. The racers and the organizers were very, very satisfied. The course was excellent, and people, we had several thousand people. The fireworks were really good, so everybody, everybody who was there had a good time. Question is, we, the problem is, we have to find a way of getting the word out. And you're right, Dr. Ruggles, maybe one of those, several of those. I mean, top of College Avenue would be easy for College Hill and the top of Monox Avenue. Ninety-five percent of people have to go through one of those intersections to get on or off the college. South Side, you have, it's a big, long area. Maybe one on Burwick Street down towards maybe Sights, and one up by, on the hill. West Ward, Butler Street, Thirteenth and Butler is a good place. So we'll look at that, though. That is, it's, they're not that expensive, and they're controlled by, you know, wireless. You just control them from the City Hall.
Can we put anything out on the water bills? Not the water, the sewer.
The sewer bills.
I don't know if everybody reads them.
Sewer trash, we, we've not had a lot of success with it, but it's, we, we will be looking at how we can get more of that done. I forgot we had a.
Mayor, I heard a good, um, things about the children having a good time, too, that day. When they were driving through, several people stopped me and said they really enjoyed the fact that the kids got more involved with that.
Well, the nice thing about it was, yeah, they, they had the fun run at three fifteen. The nice thing about it the whole day was that it was free. Everything was free, so people were able to come down, including the food at lunchtime. The, the foundation did a great job. We were originally giving out wristlets. We were originally giving out wristlets to the parade participants, and they just fed everybody. So it was really nice of them. There's no correspondence. There's no unfinished business. We'll move right into new business, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have Bill Number Thirty-four that's going to be introduced by Mr. Ettinger, where it would be amending sections in Chapter Four Seventy-five Sewers. We also.
Dr. Ruggles?
On that one, if, if you go to item.
Can she, can she finish the introduction?
Okay.
Can she just finish the introduction?
It's okay.
I mean, she was reading it, and you kind of just.
Item D. You have lined out city there, and I don't think it should be.
Let me just explain. I got this directly from.
Maybe not you, but.
Exactly.
Lined out is city, and I don't know that it should be.
On where?
Item D. And. In item F, I, I think we need to add in there, and you can, you can ask Dave, but I think we need to add city codes in that after authority rules. Okay, where it says authority rules and, or comma, city codes and regulations.
I'll do that, but I just, this was looked over by Alex, Dave Hopkins, and the engineer, apparently, for the sewer authority. So they're, they're the ones that actually made the changes. So you want after authorities' rules of regulation, you want city codes added?
Well, yeah, because, I mean, that matches what's down in item number seven. If you look at number seven below that.
Yep, I see it.
They, they say city codes, authority rules, and regulations for any act applicable to federal or state standards. So we use it there in number seven, but we don't use it in the.
I'll check with Dave tomorrow.
Top part, so that's the only point.
All right, I'll check with Dave.
Okay.
So you.
So I, I will introduce it now.
Thank you. I'll check on that person.
I would think they'd be considered minor changes, right, Mr. Shear?
Yes.
So it can be voted on in two weeks without anything?
You're not changing content. It only just changed the title. No one should rely on the title. Most acts passed in Washington purposely mislead you with their title.
Thank you, Mr. Shear.
Okay, then we have Bill Number Thirty-five being introduced by Mr. Brown, which would be amending the two thousand twenty-one general fund budget.
So I'll introduce.
We have a resolution being introduced by Mr. Millan, which would approve a job description for the position of second assistant city solicitor.
Second.
Any discussion on the second city solicitor? Roll call.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ettinger?
Aye.
Mr. Millan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
We have a resolution being introduced by Mr. Millan, which would amend the two thousand twenty-one salary and wage.
So moved.
Second.
Move the second discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ettinger?
Aye.
Mr. Millan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
At this point, we have new public comment on any matter facing the City of Easton, concerns, comments, questions, anyone in the audience? Seeing none, entertain motion for adjournment? So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Roll call, please.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ettinger?
Aye.
Mr. Millan?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.